Good evening, everybody. I now call to order the Wednesday, September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, six P. M. regular school board meeting. Before we move forward with the agenda, it's with great sadness that I share with you that we've lost two of our students tragically this month. And our deepest condolences go out to their families. And today in our moment of silence, I ask if y'all could take a moment of thoughts and prayers for their loved ones. So if you please rise to join me in a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance and the national anthem. Would now join me in the pledge of allegiance. Colors are presented this evening by FPC Air Force, R. J. R. O. T. C., Cadet First Lieutenant Torrens and Buchanan, Cadet Second Lieutenant Corbett, Corbett Master Sergeant Wickham, and Advisor Lieutenant Colonel Melvin Baskerville. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May I retire the colors? Thank you, all. You may be seated. Okay, we will move on to roll call.
Colin Conklin present.
Cheryl Messero present.
Sally Hunt.
Kristi Chong present.
Will Furry present.
LaShaka Moore.
Okay, so we will now move on to special announcements. Do we have any, oh, I'm sorry. Bear with me for just one moment here. We will now move on to proclamations, resolutions, and legislative updates. We're going to start here with two point zero two, Bullying Prevention Month, presented by Doug Glasgow.
Good evening, Board. Good evening, Superintendent Moore.
Welcome.
Thank you, sir. October is known as National Bullying Prevention Month, and we at Flagler Schools take it seriously. We've built systems of intervention and support to help mitigate those effects of bullying for our students within our school and their communities. We believe in building positive relationships through a platform called Capturing Kids' Hearts, which is a way of organically building positive relationships with our students and our community. What I'd like to do now is read the resolution of the Flagler County School Board recognizing October, two thousand and twenty-four, as National Bullying Prevention Month in Flagler County. Whereas bullying is physical, verbal, sexual, or emotional harm or intimidation intentionally directed at a person or group of people; and whereas bullying occurs in neighborhoods, playgrounds, schools, and through technology such as internet and cell phones; and whereas various researchers have concluded that bullying is the most common form of violence affecting millions of American children and adolescents annually; and whereas targets of bullying are more likely to acquire physical, emotional, and learning problems; and whereas students who are repeatedly bullied often fear such activities as riding the bus, going to school, attending school and community activities; and whereas children who bully are at greater risk of engaging in more serious violent behaviors; and whereas children who witness bullying often feel less secure, more fearful, and intimidated; and whereas the state of Florida and the school district of Flagler County commit their resources to ensure the success of the national theme, choose kindness, acceptance, and inclusion. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Flagler County School Board that the month of October, two thousand and twenty-four, is recognized as National Bullying Prevention Month; and be it further resolved that Flagler Schools encourages students, parents, and staff of the school district of Flagler County to encourage, to engage in a variety of awareness and prevention activities designed to make our schools and communities safer for all children and adolescents. Adopted by the members of the Flagler County School Board, Flagler County, Florida, at the regular open public meeting thereof held on the eighteenth of September, two thousand and twenty-four, signed by Will Furry, Chair, School Board of Flagler County, LaShaka Moore, Superintendent Flagler Schools. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we will move on to our next one here. Breast Cancer Awareness Month, presented by John Subers of Advent Health.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, again, John Subers, Advent Health, Palm Coast Foundation, and thank you so much, School Board, for letting us come before you again and talk about breast cancer and Awareness Month of coming up in October. It's a year-round deal, but we certainly focus in it in the September, October. Many of you have participated in our Pink On Parade five K over the years, and that event continues to grow and be a huge community event, much to the support and collaboration with Flagler County Schools. Don Foley and Carrie Henderson, once again, have done a phenomenal job of connecting with us and bringing really the excitement to the early morning activities before our five K with not only Troy and our color guard, but the cheerleaders, the starlights, the Interact Club is a part of us, the National Honor Society, there's so many clubs and groups within the school system that are engaging, and your teachers that are engaging with our breast cancer awareness campaign, and the money that we do raise stays right here local to help our citizens. So with that, I thank you. We have a couple other speakers, and we thank you for allowing us to be a part again and being in front of you. So thank you so much, and want to introduce Tony Bapandria, which is no stranger to anybody who will read the proclamation that we have tonight. He is the chairman of the board of our foundation, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. What he said. Yeah, October has come around again, and we're going to turn Flagler County pink. Well, kind of not pink, we got green. But as we leave, you can see on the back, it does say.
There you go.
So let me read the proclamation. I put my glasses on so I can do this.
Start pushing buttons.
Sir?
Don't push buttons.
I push buttons. I used to be a pilot. A resolution of the Flagler County School Board recognizing October twenty-fourth as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Flagler County. Whereas breast cancer is the most frequently diagnosed cancer in women in two thousand and twenty-four, an estimated three hundred, seven hundred and twenty thousand diagnoses of invasive cancer are expected in women in the U. S. along with twenty-eight hundred new cases of invasive breast cancer. And whereas only one in eight women diagnosed with breast cancer have family history, and eighty-five percent have no family history, with an increase in incident rate since nineteen ninety being predominantly in women fifty years or older. Whereas early detection with timely screening, mammograms has helped boost the breast cancer survivor rate to more than two point six million in the United States, also resulting in a forty percent decline in mortalities since nineteen eighty-nine. That's big news. Whereas Flagler Schools has supported the local efforts to raise awareness of breast cancer by forming teams of students, teachers, and staff to take part in the annual Pink On Parade five K, October sixth, as well as providing cheerleaders, color guards, and supporters to provide a supportive environment during this special event. And whereas Advent Health Palm Coast Foundation Pink Army, with the support of our community, has raised and distributed over one hundred and eighty thousand dollars, helps hundreds of patients perform over a thousand procedures in direct support of Flagler County men and women battling breast cancer. Now, therefore, it be resolved by the Flagler County School Board that October, two thousand and twenty-four, is Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Flagler County; and be it further resolved that the Flagler Schools encourages all citizens to join our breast cancer awareness campaign by encouraging all women to receive breast cancer screenings, actively educate others concerning the importance of early screening, and raise the pink flag against breast cancer. Adopted by the members of the Flagler County School Board, Flagler County, Florida, at the regular open public meeting thereof held on the eighteenth day of September, two thousand and twenty-four, signed by Will Furry, School Board Chair of Flagler County, LaCasia Moore, Superintendent of Flagler Schools. I did it. Amazing.
Did a great job.
Amazing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all for the proclamation, and I brought help tonight. I'd like to introduce our double Ds, Denise and Danielle. Yeah, y'all thought some.
Got me nervous. I didn't know where you were going.
Hello, everyone. I'm Denise Fernandez, and she's Daniela de Souza. We are Homes for Heroes in Flagler. We are thrilled to be here today. We love serving the heroes of Flagler County by helping them achieve their dream home of a homeownership.
One of the things that Flagler County is so special is our strong sense of community, and that's why we are so passionate, passionate supporters of the Advent Health Pink Army five K and the Pet Walk contest happening on October sixth. Cancer has touched all of us in some way, whether it's been ourselves, a friend, or a loved one. For me, it was very personal. My grandmother had cancer, and it was a profound impact on my life.
At a Pink Army five K and Pet Walk, all proceeds stay here in Flagler County to help those who need, which is awesome. When you work with me and Daniela at Homes for Heroes Flagler to purchase a home, heroes including law enforcement, military, healthcare workers, teachers, firefighters, they receive a discount on closing costs. And after closing, they even get a check back between three and four thousand dollars.
Denise, what was the exciting announcement you wanted to share?
We are extending our discounts to help all cancer survivors and those who are crudely facing treatment, because to us, you are all heroes. For more information, visit homesforheroesflagler.com.
So help us pack out the event. Homes for Heroes Flagler will be providing fun prizes for the winners of the Pink Out Your Pet contest. So make sure to come and stop by our tent, register today, pinkonparade.com/palmcoast. Thank you.
Thank you all.
So on behalf of Advent Health Hospital, Advent Health Foundation, thank you for the proclamation. Y'all come join us, we'll make you proud.
Thank you.
And I want to put a plug in for the Flagler Schools team. Come join the Flagler Schools team to walk with us. You don't have to be an employee. Bring your children, come and join our team. I know some of our schools are also creating teams, but come join the Flagler Schools team.
Okay, we will now move on to two point zero four, Disability History and Awareness Week, presented by Dr. Kim Holliday.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Evening.
How is everybody?
Doing great.
Good evening, everyone. Before we start our proclamations tonight, I want to tell you just a little bit about this very special woman standing next to me. We talk about homegrown leadership, and I just feel it's important to share with you that this special lady, Abra Snodgrass, moved to us, very fortunately, from Turkey. English was not her first language. She took a position with us in Flagler Schools as a support staff and decided to go through school to become a teacher, not just any teacher, but an exceptional student education teacher. She did an internship with me in a class of students with very significant and severe disabilities. When I was offered a position to move up, I really all but begged that principal to please allow her to take that role, and she did. And she excelled at it. At that particular school, it was our, under her leadership in that classroom, that we had two students with significant cognitive disabilities that were on our homecoming court. Following that, she decided, you know what, I'm going to, I'm going to spread my wings a little, and she became the support facilitator, having a caseload of ninety-plus students, and then became the chair, the lead E. S. E. teacher of those schools, both schools that she served. When an opening came up to work within the transition department and take on our trail program, Abra stepped up to the plate, and I know you know, trail kind of runs on its own, so having somebody that I trusted that could take on the program and really expand it meant a lot. And now she is our transition specialist, and I am so proud to be able to work with her side by side and share tonight with you that I am passing the torch on disability employment awareness and disability history awareness to this fantastic lady, Ms. Abra Snodgrass.
I really wasn't expecting that, but I'm so glad from my leader, my mentor, for years, that everything that I know about E. S. E. I learned from Dr. Holliday. I owe her so much, and our students and our community owe her so much. But anyway. Good evening, everybody. I'm so glad to be here. I think this is one of my favorite moments of the school year, having the spotlight. I absolutely love this moment because I have my students here, I have my team, I have my leaders, and I have community either next to me, in front of me, and behind me. I feel like we all are here with the same purpose at the exact moment, united in our direction to dedication to our students. I really feel when we come together as a community, as one, that is our focus. We do celebrate in October Disability Awareness Month and Disability Employment Awareness Month, and it fills me with joy to share incredible progress we make each year in our fantastic and imperfectly perfect E. S. E. world. In addition to our celebration, I'm super excited about the, some of the incredible curriculum developments and activities planned in collaboration with the Education Foundation, particularly through our Features in Focus events. These events will play an important role, continuing our mission to empower students, give them the tools, inform them about post-high school, as well as life in general. Please keep an eye out for the important emails coming your way before October first. We are proud to present two proclamations. So please, help me introduce with you these fantastic Trail students and project search interns to celebrate and read the proclamations with me. I have Adam, Cece, Johnny, and Marshall. And we have been practicing, but bear with us. I am going to start first, Adam, and then I will give the torch to you, okay? He's ready? Come next to me. Come, you're next to me. A resolution of the Flagler County School Board recognizing disability history and Awareness Weeks in Flagler County.
Whereas in two thousand, the father language study designated the first two weeks of October as disability history and awareness weeks in public schools. Okay, minus twelve, and whereas the goals of disability history and awareness introduction include recognizing all the abilities of all students and.
Thank you. Cece?
Whereas in recognition results in better treatment and valid.
Individuals.
Individuals with disabilities in society, especially youth in school, and whereas encouraging individuals with disabilities to increase their self-esteem results in more of them gaining pride in their abilities, obtaining post-secondary education, entering the workforce, and contributing into their communities, and.
Flagler County is reaffirm its committed, committed, hold on, its committing.
Committed.
Okay, let's write first. To the inclusion of equal opportunities for all individuals with disabilities and observing disabilities, history, awareness, weeks allow, weeks allow us to appreciate a accomplishment of our, of our students with disabilities, their parents, their teachers, and their staff, staff in Flagler School.
Marshall?
Okay, okay. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Flagler County School Board, the first two weeks of October, two thousand and twenty-four, as a disability history and awareness weeks, adopted by the members of the Flagler County School Board, Flagler County, Florida, at the regular open public meeting thereof held on the eighteenth day of September, two thousand and twenty-four.
Will Furry, Chair, School Board of Flagler County, LaCasia Moore, Spanish and Spanish schools. Thank you, guys.
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Bravo. Good job.
Join us up front for a photo?
All right, great. All right, great.
We'll get them while they're still standing.
Dr. Holliday, everybody's getting down.
Okay.
Okay, so we have another one.
We do have another one. I'm not done yet. I'm gonna linger a little bit here.
Employment Awareness Month.
Yes. I would like to invite our Trail teacher, Ms. Sanchez, our Project Search teacher, Ms. Kulviki, and founder and CEO of Vincent's Clubhouse, Erica Kona, to the podium. Help me read the proclamation for Disability Employment Awareness Month.
Yes, we would like to also recognize October 2024 as Disability Employment Awareness Month in Flagler County. Whereas in 1988, Congress declared the month of October as National Disability Employment Awareness. Month to recognize the contributions made by individuals with disabilities. And whereas a diverse workforce creates the opportunity for growth and helps toward building a stronger economy for our city. And...
Whereas our residents with disabilities deserve the right to live independently, enjoy self-determination, and be treated equally in the workplace. And whereas vocational rehabilitation, the Division of Blind Services, and supporting agencies have worked with employers and community organizations throughout the state, including Flagler County School District, to enable thousands of Florida citizens with disabilities to enter the workforce. And...
Whereas Flagler Schools has seen an overwhelming impact on the lives of many of Florida's citizens with disabilities by offering services including job placement assistance, training, support services, and job coaching. And whereas Flagler Schools joins the rest of Florida in recognizing the contributions of the 2.8 million Floridians with disabilities by celebrating October 2024 as Disability Employment Awareness Month.
Now therefore be proclaimed by the Flagler County School Board, the month of October 2024, as Disability Employment Awareness Month, adopted by the members of the Flagler County School Board, Flagler County, Florida, at the regular open public meeting thereof, held on the 18th day of September 2024, the furry chair, School Board, Flagler County, and Lakasha Moore, Superintendent of Flagler Schools. Yes. So lastly, you guys, we would like to thank and recognize two incredible supporters of our students and programs. One is Granvila Senior Living Community. I'm not sure if Tim made it. It was last second raining going on. So, but, but Gran, I just wanted to talk to you guys about a little bit Granvila. They have been a host business for Project Search last seven years. They have not only given our students opportunities, but also hired several of them. It has been a great seven years, and as Project Search transitioned out, they also welcomed the, this year Trail students to do the same thing. And we are very happy and grateful for their partnership. And our current host business for Project Search is Advent Health. And Advent Health also welcomed Project Search with open arms and clear vision and understanding. They created a safe and supportive environment where our students can develop essential employment skills and fostering the growth and independence of future leaders. So we would like to say thank you. I just want to thank all of you for giving the spotlight to celebrate our students' success, progress, and helping to build the brighter future. Your support means a lot, and we really appreciate, we really appreciate other business owners. We have so many to thank, thank too. The other one is in Mizzou Cook, and I, they really wanted to be here, but the last minute things happened. And, and, and the other one is Publix. We really appreciate all the things that they do for our students. Thank you, guys.
Outstanding.
Thank you. Want to come up front for a picture?
Dr. Holliday, I just want to commend you on the amazing team you have put together and your leadership for what you've done for students with disabilities all of these years, and to the partners that work with our kids.
Let me make sure that I got my stuff.
All right, so now we'll move on to 3.01 Superintendent Strategic Plan Spotlight.
Good evening. I want to just take a moment to spotlight our goal of resilience and well-being. This, for the last few weeks, our Student Services Team, and I don't see Mr. Finelli here, but Mr. Finelli and Brandy Williams, leading that team as we support Flagler Palm Coast High School, as well as our feeder schools, in the tragic loss of our, our students. I just want to really appeal to families that we do have these resources available if your child needs services, be it they're impacted by the loss of these students, or anything else, to reach out to your local principal, or your child's teacher, or even your child's school counselor, so that we can support and ensuring that we can provide them with the services that they need. So tonight's spotlight is on our Student Services Team and the opportunities that we have available for fam, for families and for students related to counseling.
Thank you, Superintendent Moore. We'll now move on to the Flagler County Education Foundation Spotlight. We have Selena Hernandez presenting this evening.
Hello. Thank you, Superintendent, Chair, and Board for allowing us to share the great news with you. I'm Selena Hernandez, speaking on behalf of the Education Foundation. So we just wanted to share on a few things. First, what we've been up to is thanks all to our donors. We have been able to spread the love to our Flagler Schools staff and teachers, and give them joy in these first few weeks of school. We've been to several schools, just either providing cupcakes before testing, putting things in the break room for the teachers, things like that. Another great thing happening is we have a new annual partner with Edward Jones. They are supporting FPC in their entrepreneurship program. They're going to be able to support FPC's Fresh Friday Initiative that promotes positive behavior and resiliency traits, which is great. We also had a Take Stock in Children signing on Monday, where we signed on 32 students, which will be going through the program, and at the end, hopefully getting their one, our two-to-four-year scholarship. And with that, we brought on 32 mentors, which half of them were new mentors, which is very exciting for our Take Stock in Children program. So those are the great things happening in the Education Foundation.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we will move on to our next agenda item, and this is an exciting one here. So I'd like to invite Principal Bozeman and Principal Bosserdet up, and they will introduce our new Student School Board members for the 2024-25 year.
Good evening, Board Chair Furry, School Board members, and Superintendent Moore. I am so excited to introduce the Metansus High School Student School Board Representative for the 24-25 school year, Jahani Strong. Jahani is to me the quintessential Metansus kid in so many ways. Jahani was originally born in Colombia and emigrated here with her family as a small child. Throughout her high school career, she's involved in a multitude of activities, including student government, debate club, the Flagler Youth Orchestra Key Club, Amigos Club, Leo Club, and Decca Club. She's also a member of our varsity swim team and serves as a team manager for our boys soccer team. Outside of school, she's worked as an extended day counselor, a swimming instructor, a summer camp counselor, and a lifeguard for Flagler County Schools. And she's highly involved with her church, and she even recently started playing the violin in her church choir. Jahani has a deep passion for and dreams of pursuing a career in law. She's been a three-year participant in the Metansus High School Law and Justice Program and volunteers as a student judge for teen court. After high school, Jahani plans to pursue a career in law and eventually politics. Academically, she's an ace diploma candidate who's also taking dual enrollment courses through Daytona State, and she recently joined our SAC Committee to be even more involved at Metansus, even though we're both missing that meeting right now. When I asked Jahani what she does in her free time, which I'm not really sure how it would be possible for her to have any, she said that she enjoys spending time with her mom and her sister and her cats, and volunteering at a local nursing home and with her church. Jahani is a social butterfly. She's cheerful. She's going to be an excellent voice for all of the students at Metansus High School, and very proud to introduce her to you this evening.
Very nice.
Good evening, Board, Superintendent Moore. My name is Bobby Bosserdet. I am the proud Principal of Flagler Palm Coast High School, and I want to welcome, well, I want to thank you for being able to welcome our Student School Board Rep, Ms. Dani Nieves. Dani's got a 5.0 GPA, a 1370 SAT. She is anticipating to get her IB diploma, has over 200 community service hours, and over 1,000 working hours. But that is not why she was selected to be our School Board Member. I just want to start with just the opening paragraph in her application as she applied. "The voice is known as the heartbeat of democracy itself. Without having a voice, an opinion, or representation, you do not have a just system. Representation is important in everything: culture, government, and of course, education. As the representative, I would strive to be the voice for Flagler Palm Coast High School as accurately as I can, because everybody is different. From goals, interests, day-to-day lives, struggles, and achievements, every person at Flagler Palm Coast High School is unique. If you ever run into me in public, I am a walking billboard for Flagler County Schools, and I will sell my school to anybody that will listen. And everybody that asks me, what school should I send my kid to? What school's good? I will be the first to say that every school in Flagler County Schools is a good school, and you can't go wrong with any of them. But what separates FPC from everybody else is the demographics of the kids that we serve." Dani came in and she shared a story with me. She comes from a military family. She's been to 12 different schools in her career. So I can't imagine the struggles of not just 12 first days of school, but the amount of first days of school that Dani had. And she also shared that she's never been to a school as special as FPC, that she came in with this preconceived notion of certain kids. She wanted to go into the IB program and thought it was just for the smart kids that didn't want a social life. She challenged herself to join ROTC. And I think she fostered the importance of stepping into a leadership role and not just serving one agenda, one belief system, but taking pride in representing the diversity of the kids that we serve. That is why I think she is the perfect candidate for our Student School Board Rep for FPC, and she will definitely set the standard in student leadership in our county. Please welcome Dani Nieves.
Well, congratulations to Ms. Strong and Ms. Nieves as our new Student School Board members. If you come up for a picture up front, and then you'll take your seats at the dais tonight.
Great. Here we go. One, two, three. Congratulations.
Oh my goodness.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, come on up and join us. Okay, so as our new Student School Board members have been seated, we'll move on to our next agenda item, and that is Apple Distinguished School Recognition presented by Ryan Deising and Ms. Teresa Phillips. Welcome.
And I want to take a moment to acknowledge that Mr. Deising was just sworn in as the President of the Florida Association for Educational Data Systems for the state of Florida. Yes.
Congratulations.
They fade, right? Congratulations.
Thank you. Literally just drove back from, from Orlando and got here. But thank you. I appreciate that very much so.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. Board, I'm, I'm standing before you with just joy that we are recognizing five more of our schools as Apple Distinguished Schools. And the, the, the part of it that I'm just absolutely ecstatic about is that this is a recognition that is not something that is just all over the place. And it really means that the impact of the technology programs and really the work that these ladies do with our, within our schools, with our, with our teachers, really do impact education and the opportunities that our students here in Flagler Schools have, to the point that it is recognized, not just Florida, not just the United States, but across the entire world. These recognitions are shared with 37 countries around the world. So I wanted to take a moment, I don't, I think we missed getting Amy Kopack's name on there, so I want to apologize for, for not getting that place. So that is my fault. But I wanted to get an opportunity for these ladies to talk a little bit about what this recognition means and what this looks like.
Good evening. I just wanted to say that Apple nominates schools, Apple, the company, nominates schools worldwide. Not us, it's not us nominating these schools, it's Apple nominating these schools to become Apple Distinguished Schools based on how they leverage Apple technology in their schools. And as these nominated schools prepare their applications, they're required to create videos that showcase and how they utilize the technology in order to inspire the students, how they, how it impacts our students, and how the imagination of students can empower them to discover possibilities. So if you haven't had a chance to look at any of their videos, they're all posted on their websites under their instructional technology, and they are cute. They, the kids are number one in their videos, and it just really showcases how each individual school takes their spin on how to use that Apple technology.
Thank you.
So these applications are then reviewed by worldwide leaders of Apple around the world, and then they select the, the people to be named this. And I know we mentioned that we have five named this year, but just to give you a little bit more perspective, we have approximately 900 worldwide schools, including elementary, high school, and secondary schools, and 37 countries, just under 600 are in the United States, and five of those this year were named from here. So just kind of puts that in perspective. And then these schools are invited to participate in the Apple Worldwide Leadership Event, which is held in Orlando. And as a part of that event, we are actually featured. Several of our schools, people from all over will come and tour as part of that as well. So we want to go ahead and recognize the schools that were named. So we want to go ahead and recognize the schools that were named.
So cool.
That's why I get to do the fun part. We'd like to recognize Belter Elementary School. And we do have plaques, but they actually kind of beat us to it, and we're already up on the wall.
Yes, it is.
Buddy Taylor Middle School. Indian Trails Middle School. Old Kings Elementary School. And Rimfire Elementary School. And just to wrap up, I just want to thank this group of principals. It's been awesome having the opportunity to work with you guys and have the opportunity for having you guys nominated and worked through the process. Really looking forward to the Leadership Academy. If you guys do have the opportunity to fit in your schedule, it is absolutely just an amazing event to get to connect with folks from around the world that are impacting education with technology. So, thank you.
That's amazing.
Congratulations.
Okay, sweet. Picture. We're going to put you right in the middle.
I want to just make note that you did say five more schools, because we already have schools that have this designation, so we're adding more schools to that. So we are definitely making an impact across the world.
Somebody in the back. No, you could have done the Sweet 16 photo, but no. All right, guys. Congratulations. Right up here. One, two, three. One more. Thank you, guys.
Okay, so now we've moved past the fun stuff and down to business now, right? So we're going to move on to 4.01 through 4.03, Approval of Minutes. I need a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Massaro and a second by Dr. Conklin. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? Motion passes unanimously. So we'll move on to the adoption of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda this evening?
I do not have any.
Okay. So then I'd like a motion to please adopt the agenda as presented.
Move approval. Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Ms. Chong and a second by Ms. Massaro. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? Passes unanimously. We will move forward with this agenda. And that leads us to public comment. Do we have anybody signed up for public comment on agenda items?
Yes, we do. We have a few on agenda items, 1701.
Okay.
First person would be April Adams.
Good evening, Board.
Welcome.
Welcome.
My name is April Adams, and I've been an educator here in Flagler for 19 years. Today, I come to you as a parent to share with you the impact that ECG screenings have had on my son's life. I know you and many other members of our community have heard Hayden's story, but I want it fresh in your mind when you vote today on a measure that could save a child's life. In May of 2023, we signed up for free physicals that were offered here in Flagler. Between a huge crowd forgetting our paperwork and trying to register for the new clearance app, I admit I was not in the best of moods when we reached the last station. A volunteer at the table told me it wouldn't take much time, so I figured we might as well get his ECG screening. I got a call on a Friday afternoon a few weeks later stating that his ECG came back abnormal. I immediately started calling around to schedule his appointment with a cardiologist. We were lucky enough to find someone who took our insurance and could get him in quickly. Apparently, he had been having heart palpitations for several years, but in true teenage fashion, he just assumed it was normal and never mentioned it to us. If it wasn't for this ECG, it's anyone's guess if he would have ever mentioned it. My husband and I started reading up on his diagnosis, and we decided to allow him to continue with soccer as long as he promised, that if he felt his heart racing on the field, he would come off and immediately tell his coach. Hayden had really sunk his heart and soul into soccer over the last few years, so we were hoping he would not have to quit playing. At his appointment, the abnormal ECG was confirmed, and he was officially diagnosed with Wolf-Parkinson-White Syndrome. The doctor put him on a heart monitor for the next two weeks and told us that she felt comfortable allowing him to play soccer unless he had an episode on the field. His condition is rarely life-threatening, but the episodes are alarming nonetheless. We scheduled a heart ablation for him several weeks later to correct his abnormal pathway. He spent several hours on the operating table and the remainder of the day in the PICU recovering. Little over a week later, he was able to return to his normal activities, including the soccer that he loved so much. I'm glad we had the opportunity to discover and fix the issue before it had a chance to affect him on the field. Four athletes have died just in this past month across the United States due to undiagnosed heart issues, including one right here in Florida. I don't understand why we wouldn't put safeguards in place to protect the lives of our children here in Flagler. I am here today to beg of you to make this part of our athletic clearance so that we can catch more students who may have issues like my son. ECG screenings are quick and non-invasive. It would have been way too easy for me to pass on the screening that day, and his story could have potentially had a very different ending. Please make the right choice tonight to protect our students.
Thank you for your comments. Next.
Good evening, Board. Ms. Moore. A little over two years ago, I took my son Sam to the free sports physicals provided by Advent Health. My wife signed him up for the free ECG. A few weeks later, we received a notification that the ECG results showed an abnormality. After meeting with pediatric cardiologists and further testing, he was diagnosed with type 1 Long QT Syndrome, a heart rhythm disorder that causes fast, chaotic heartbeats which can be life-threatening. The Mayo Clinic says the most common symptom of Long QT Syndrome is fainting. Fainting is preceded by symptoms such as blurred vision, lightheadedness, pounding heartbeat or palpitations, and weakness. When Sam was a student at Rimfire Elementary, he was in the running club. He complained of those symptoms. We chalked up to laziness, because being my son, he'd do anything to get out of running. We didn't push him to go on, but it's possible he could have fainted, or worse, had we pushed him. Long QT is detected by an ECG test or genetic testing, neither of which a pediatric doctor would test for without any known reason. Sam's condition is genetic on my mother-in-law's side, but nobody in her family knew about it. Again, no doctors checking for this unless there is a known reason. According to Boston Children's Hospital, one in every 2,500 children are born with Long QT. It also develops by other means, such as antibiotic use, which pretty much all kids take, and medications used to treat anxiety and depression, and which some of our students take. He is not even the only student in his school with it. ITMS may have a lot of students, but I'm pretty sure they don't have 2,500, and I'm only speaking about Long QT, not other potential underlying conditions. This has restricted Sam's activities. He cannot participate in PE because of the fear that a coach will not be able to get to the nearest AED machine in time. Brain damage occurs within four minutes after cardiac arrest. This has changed their lives. I could go on about the things he can no longer do, but this isn't about feeling pity for him or for us. These changes are first-world problems. However, what doesn't change is that it is a free test, and it is being provided. What a parent chooses to do with those results is their choice or their right. I'm a teacher, and each year we sit in Flagler Auditorium and are presented with Flagler Schools' mission statement, which is to, quote, "Ensure educational success through high expectations and innovative thinking in a safe learning environment to empower students to reach their full potential as responsible, ethical, and productive citizens in a diverse and changing world." We are also told that as teachers, our first obligation is the safety of our children. Please reconsider your position and opt for the ethical choice of safety and the ability for these students to reach their full potential. I'm sure you would rather choose to attend their graduation than possibly attend their funeral. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker.
I apologize. I'm going to get myself together. Okay. Good evening, Board. Good evening, Ms. Moore. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Jennifer Cavallari, and I am here tonight to share a family story about how an optional ECG offered as a part of a mandatory screener to be eligible to play middle school sports saved our son's life. In 2021, our oldest son, Sam, was extremely excited to play middle school sports. So at the end of fifth grade, we signed him up for the free screener that Advent Health and Flagler County Schools offered. At that time, Sam was being treated for asthma, but we had no other health issues that we knew, or he had no other health issues that we knew of. So we expected a clean bill of health. We were shocked when we received a call that his EKG, ECG, came back abnormal. After many doctor's appointments and tests, we were given the news that our son had Long QT. Our family had never heard of this disorder. We learned that it is a heart condition that affects the heart's electrical activity, and that causes a fast and chaotic heartbeat. We also learned that he had type 1, which is genetic. At that point, our entire lives changed. We had no idea if this condition came from my side of the family or my husband's side of the family, so we all had to undergo genetic testing. As a result of Sam's diagnosis, strict safety precautions were put into place for him. He was placed on beta blockers and was told that he wouldn't be able to participate in PE or any competitive sports. A medical plan was created for school, and door-to-door transportation was added to his 504. You guys are amazing with that. Thank you. Every medication that he is prescribed has to be approved so that it doesn't prolong the QT interval. He isn't allowed to ride roller coasters, swim, or go on water slides, and we carry an AED with us at all times, just in case. We learned that hydration is extremely important for Sam, as is reducing his stress. I am not sharing our story for you to feel sorry for us. I am sharing our story with you in hopes that you will see how important the screener It doesn't infringe upon parents' rights. It saves children's lives by providing valuable information that we might not ever find out until it's too late. It gives us the opportunity to prevent tragedies in our students' daily lives while they're on campus and at their homes. I am forever grateful for Flagler County Schools and Advent Health. Your partnership in this program saved our son's life. And I always, always advocate that families take advantage of these free screeners. Thank you for allowing me to speak and share our story. I would ask that you would please consider mandating ECGs as a part of the physical for the students' need to play sports. Thank you, and I apologize for my emotions.
Thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lori Bossett. My husband is usually a better speaker, but he's not here tonight, so I'm going to do my best. First, I want to say that we live in Volusia County, and our two children went to school all the way through high school, so we are not Flagler residents. I want to say that I'm very happy that your school board has taken this vote into consideration for the students in your county. The current FHSAA clearance is an opt-out document that has a one-liner in small print at the end of the document that basically just says it's recommended but not required to have the screening with a checkbox to opt out. There is no educational value on that form for the parent on what an ECG is or what it accomplishes. When many, perhaps most, parents fill the form out, they're doing so while juggling a million other tasks during the work week. With a quick read of a vague, uninformative statement about EKGs and the place to opt out, since it doesn't appear important enough to be mandated, they check the box no. That is what we did as a parent of our 15-year-old daughter who was entering her sophomore year at Seabreeze. Okay. Be good. So our daughter Julia had a physical, which is mandatory for all student athletes, and she did not get an EKG, because we did opt out on that. She was cleared to participate in all her sports. And two months later, on October 13th, 2020, she collapsed on the gym floor at Seabreeze High School while warming up for basketball. She went into sudden cardiac arrest. But thankfully, the school resource officer was there and did CPR and saved her life. She did chest compressions on her for seven minutes straight, and the fire department came and did the AED, which literally saved her life. She was not out of the woods yet. She was lifelighted to Wilson's Hospital in Jacksonville, where she was in ICU for 10 days. She did get a defibrillator and pacemaker, which she will have forever, heart medicine forever, and she was diagnosed with Lung QT Syndrome. Anyways, I know I'm running out of time. The point here is that we really want this to be a mandatory vote to have these kids screened. I mean, we thought we were doing the right thing. We have physicals, we do everything if the school suggests it. We're the kind of parents, we follow the rules. If they suggested an EKG, sure. We didn't know anything about heart problems until this happened to us. So if people like me who are educated and we're good people and follow the rules, for someone in our family like us to ignore that, I mean, it's just, if we were more educated on the purpose of these EKGs for school physicals, then yes, we would have done it. My daughter is a unicorn. She is lucky she survived, so, thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Jen Thornton.
Okay. Before the next speaker, I just would like to remind those in the chamber that we do have some rules of decorum here during public comment and clapping. I know these are some very emotional testimonies, but I just ask that you please observe the rules, so, please, next speaker.
Welcome. Hello. Nice to see everybody this evening. Approximately 40,000 babies are born in the U.S. each year with congenital heart disease, also known as CHD. That equates to one child born every 15 minutes. CHD is the most common birth defect and also the leading cause of death in infants and children. Last time I was in front of you all, I told you about my son Cooper. Cooper was diagnosed with CHD. He has Schon's complex at 17 months. My son was diagnosed when he was in heart failure. After numerous doctors and many different tests, a doctor from Spain actually did an EKG and found that my son was born with four heart defects. 13 years later, my son has been through nine open-heart surgeries and two mechanical heart valves. He's on a blood thinner for the rest of his life. I tell you this story because there are a lot of people that are not as blessed and lucky as I am. I tell you this because sometimes a simple test like an EKG can save a life. In the past two weeks, we actually lost another young man, football player, in St. Joe, around the west coast of Florida, that collapsed on the football field, went into cardiac arrest. He was 16 years old and actually preparing to play in college football. We also lost another child in high school from Palaca, who also died in his sleep after football practice. Once again, I tell you this because I really do hope you vote to make this mandatory, because there are a lot of parents out there that are not educated on congenital heart disease. I know even with my education, I learned a lot about the heart after I graduated with my doctorate. It's been eye-opening, and I always promise my children I will always advocate for them. But I'm also going to advocate for the next parent that has a child with congenital heart disease, because there are many out there. And I feel as a parent and as somebody that lives in this county and loves our county and our children, that we need to advocate for all of our children. So I thank you very much for giving me this opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stacy Cardacini. Did I say that right?
Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Stacy Cardacini, and I am a heart
My name is Stacy Cardachini and I am a heart screening director with Who We Play For. It is safe stories like the ones we heard tonight, Hayden, Julia, that keep me going. I want to thank Advent Health for working with Who We Play For to save lives. But you see, the ending for our family was not a happy one. My son Alexander died at the age of 21 from sudden cardiac arrest due to undetected hypertrophic cardiomyopathy. Of all the conditions that can cause sudden cardiac arrest in youth, this is the number one killer. We know from top pediatric cardiologists across the nation and abroad that an ECG heart screening could have saved Alexander's life about 95% of the time. As a mom, I would have never considered my rights infringed upon if the school or literally anyone would have suggested that my only son might die of sudden cardiac arrest if I didn't get him a heart screening. I knew nothing about this possibility before he died. How could my perfectly handsome and healthy son just drop dead? Alex was just two months away from marrying his high school sweetheart. He was five days away from his birthday. He had Christmas gifts wrapped to give his sisters. But instead, he collapsed to his death when his heart stopped on a normal day as he was washing up for dinner with his grandparents. This is not rare, as you may have been told. In fact, at least one in 300 youth has an undetected heart condition. Alexander's death revealed a genetic condition in our family which has saved my life and also his little sister. I wish it had been me instead of him, but actually, no, I wish he would have just had the opportunity to get an ECG heart screening. Other school districts throughout the state are already requiring these lifesaving screenings for athletes, ROTC, bands, and cheer, and I have personally met the grateful families whose children have had their lives saved by an ECG screening. Alex wasn't a football star, he was not an athlete, but while he did play sports as a kid, Alex was a talented musician who spent six years in the band program at Edgewood Junior/Senior and also at FAU. Our wish is that his death does not only save me and my daughter, but that his story will change your mind about the critical need to require ECG heart screenings for athletes and strongly recommend that all students, all students get an ECG heart screening throughout their youth and beyond. Every heart, every kid. While CPR and AED are powerful tools to save lives, the very best thing is early detection and prevention. With out-of-hospital survival rates at less than 7%, we urge you, and in fact, as a grieving mother, I beg you, I beg you to require these heart screenings for athletes and strongly recommend them for all kids. You will save lives, I assure you. And to the parents who worry about their child not being able to play sports, I assure you, none of that will matter if they are dead. This is for Alexander. God bless you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sean Seema.
Good evening, and it's an honor to be in, to be in this room with all of you. And I came up here, I had this magnificent speech that I was gonna do for you, but my heart is in my stomach. I want to tell all of you right now, what you've done thus far is amazing because I didn't even know about the Cavalier family. I know for sure in the last couple of years that this group has allowed four lives to be saved. I know, and there's two of them, three of them in this room, that because you decided to let us come in, I'm with Who We Play For, we work with Advent, there's four kids that have been identified, excuse me, five that we know of, four that have had procedures to fix their problems and they get to move on with their life. That would have never happened if you guys did not make that decision to let this happen. I grew up in Jacksonville, Florida, 20 years in the military. I'm a sports medicine orthopedic PA, 25 years I've been doing it. I've done thousands of physical exams on kids. And until February 2nd, 2016, when I got a phone call that my daughter, an elite athlete who never had one medical problem, was lying on the floor of a gym having CPR done to This little piece of crap here, it looks like it's been drug around in the back of a dump truck, saved my daughter's life. This piece of machinery saved her life. What I didn't know as a PA doing thousands of physicals on kids is that that physical exam I was doing, that history I was taking, was gonna miss most things that killed our kids. Most things that are gonna kill our kids when we sign that piece of paper, we ain't gonna cover for it. Adding an ECG will catch anywhere from 90 to 95% of these conditions. Flagler County is the perfect setup to make this a requirement. You've already heard it. It makes no sense that this has, as a medical provider, until they told me what happened to my daughter, I had no idea. Most parents, including myself, do not think that our kids have heart problems and that they need an ECG because what we're doing right now does not meet the standard. You have Advent Health walking beside you, willing to work with you, willing to make sure that your kids are screened for free. Your kids in this community are some of the luckiest in the country. I'm gonna be with you tomorrow, ma'am, over at the Northeast Florida Educational Consortium, and we're gonna celebrate the life of the boy Robert from Palaca, the kid that was over in Port St. Joe. And there's 21 other young people in the state of Florida since October that we don't know about. I've sent many of you--
Please wrap up your comments, sir. If you can just have a closing.
I'm gonna close it. I will say this, I implore you to make this a requirement. Offer the opt-out, but you make sure that when that parent signs that I don't want my kid to have this test, that they understand what's in that fine print before they sign their name. You're almost there, I beg you to please do it. It's tough on you guys, you guys are under a lot of pressure.
Thank you, sir, thank you.
Just let me say--
We have more--
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Please take a seat.
Robert Stefsek.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Yes, sir, thank you for your comments.
Good evening, board. Madam Superintendent, thanks for allowing me to sign in a little bit late there, I appreciate it. I wear multiple hats, there's plenty of emotional testimony that was given tonight. I'll keep my comments as brief as I can. You've heard from the testimony already that sudden cardiac arrest is the leading cause of sports-related death, and if you split hairs with it, it's activity-related death. So we know that conditions exist within our young people that predispose them to risk of death, and we're hoping to get ahead of that. If I was up here two years ago, I would have said, whoa, 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 wait, we don't have the infrastructure in place. We're two years removed from that, we are ready to go. I do a lot of work throughout the state, I do, I work on special committees, and our motto there is, what are you doing to keep somebody else's kids safe? Somebody else's kids safe. So, again, a lot of weight on your shoulders. I can tell you that north of you, we're watching a lot of what's going to happen tonight. North of you in Duval County, all of our athletic trainers in all 17 schools have their own personal ECG unit to screen athletes. We're moving forward. We're looking for you guys to make a great decision tonight because, trust me, in just a week, I will be face-to-face with Dr. Bernier in the Duval schools and we'll be making the same decisions. We'll be moving forward with protecting kids. So, again, thank you for taking the topic. I'm gonna leave you with just this, oh yeah, I got a minute and a half, thank you, Sean. So, I'm an athletic trainer by profession, I've been out on the sidelines, I've been doing this for over 30 years. I have four kids that have participated in sports, very competitive sports. My youngest, a competitive gymnast and a competitive soccer player, she would come home every day, you know, with a different injury and, you know, just like every other parent, and I'm like, put some ice on it, you know, you'll be all right, let me rub some, let me rub some dirt on that, that'll be all right. And I thought she was just looking for dad's attention, and I gave her a lot of that, and she kept coming home saying, "My chest hurts, Dad, my chest hurts." And finally, I got fed up with her when she was about 12-years-old because I thought she was trying to get out of going to gymnastics practice. It's pretty tough. And I said, "Fine, if your chest hurts that much, guess what? I have a cardiologist on speed dial, he's one of my good friends, would you like to see him?" And she said, "Yeah, Dad." And unbeknownst to me, we went to this appointment and sure enough, she's diagnosed with Wolf Parkinson's white. She needed an ablation. Wolf Parkinson's white is one of the leading causes of sudden cardiac arrest in athletes. Amazing. I was listening to her the whole time, she was telling me that something's not right, Dad, what are you going to do? And finally, we did take action and we got that screening for her. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
That concludes public comment on agenda items.
Okay, so we will close public comment and bring it back to the dais and move on with the agenda. First order of business is, pardon me, financial consent, items 7.01 through 7.07. Just for the benefit of the public, we will be moving through consent items which we have already workshopped, so these approvals will move quite quickly. I'd like a motion to approve financial consent, 7.01 through 7.07.
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Massaro and a second by Ms. Chong. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, passes unanimously. So we will move on to academic service consent. I'd like a motion to approve 9.01 through 9.06.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Ms. Massaro, I need a second.
Conklin, Dr. Conklin.
Dr. Conklin, second by Dr. Conklin, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, passes unanimously. We will now move down to human resource service consent, 11.01 through 11.02, need a motion to approve.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Chong and a second by Ms. Massaro, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, passes unanimously. Okay, so now we will move to our first action item of the meeting, and that is 7.01, ECG So we have several options that were to be considered this evening, and--
Chair for--
Are there any, oh, do we have a--
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion for option three, which is mandatory, with the only addition with adding the marching band and J-Rotzy. Cheerleading would be considered--
Do we have a second to that motion?
I second.
Okay, I have a second by Ms. Massaro, so I'll open this up for discussion.
I just want to state a disclaimer with all the misinformation out there. So right now, we offer free ECGs, they are available, and as we've heard, they've saved lives. And I don't think there's any doubt that all five of us are in support of that, so I just want to make that clear. But what we're talking about tonight is, are we mandating it? Will we have an opt-out or just leave it optional? I've thought about it a lot more, I do, I think there are some other things to talk about, and we're here, so I do want to explore that. One thing would be the contract with Advent. You know, what will the terms of that be? When will we see that? You know, how many years, you know, what if we need to get out of it? Will that come to us afterward, after we vote this in?
I do believe this fiscal year, you approved an extension with Advent Health.
But once we approve this, will we talk about it more? How many years we're in it and, like, more terms to that?
Yeah, absolutely, I can work with Ms. Rizzo and district staff as long as, with Mr. Nason and the rest of Advent Health regarding that contract.
I'm asking that question because of a neighboring county and what they've gone through, so that's just one concern. Also, an email that came to us, making sure we have a plan in place if a child does need immediate medical care. That's something we need to be considering, do we want to take that on? There's not a pediatric hospital close by, so a child would need to get to Jacksonville or Orlando.
That's right, I would say that's right at about an hour. My daughter had surgery at Wolfson's, and it's, I think it's right at about an hour, it's quite convenient. Would that be, does anybody in the room know is Wolfson's a spot that would treat that? Yeah, is that about right? Right about an hour north of here?
But you do have to consider, and again, we just need to have a plan in place, there needs to be a referral to a cardiologist and making sure they can get an appointment and it's not something that's months out. Also, I know we talked about this, if they miss the free ECG, wouldn't they have to go and pay for one?
That's consideration, we are gonna work with Advent Health. There was one of the options that Mr. Nason did present to you, board, the possibility of providing the training to the athletic trainers to provide that screening, and then the screening does get sent off for a reading.
What kind of training are we gonna, like, are we gonna require people to have ACLS or only BLS?
I am not, I do not have that answer.
Also, cost to parents, what if we get a false positive? Just throwing out options here, and now we send somebody to go get checked out with a cardiologist, now they have a high deductible or whatever. Financially, who's gonna be responsible for that? Just something to think about.
If we, just let me jump in here for a second. If we go ahead and approve this tonight, do we not have to come up with a policy that would actually start outlining all these details?
So the policy is before you, the operations would be, would be the district staff to create procedures on what they would look like.
Right, exactly, we would need, a lot of those questions that were just brought up, I think would need to be, you know, explained how it would be handled, so we won't run into some of the same problems previous school districts that have proved it ran into.
Correct.
Okay, that would help.
Yeah, that's, we don't have some of that information tonight on how that would be addressed. You know, it's one of those things, if we approve it and then find out later with some of these concerns, what the ramifications might be, that's concerning. But I'll let, I'll ask, is there any other board members that would like to comment on this?
I would just, I would like to add that I've gone through, I've been going through the last couple of years, the physical process here in Flagler County, okay? And it's crazy when you get there, it's bedlam. I mean, there's hundreds of kids, hundreds of staff, you know, and they're going through all the basics, you know, and you're right, you get to the end, and a lot of parents are watching their clocks, they got kids to feed because it's always around dinnertime, and I could see how it would be easy for people to opt out because they just, they didn't have the time. And I think that's where a school district is responsible for doing everything we can to protect our children. Everything we can do. And this is, as long as this remains free and takes, takes no more than 10 minutes, and that's with all those hundreds of people around because they have such a good system now in place. And we have a child that's tested once in their four-year career, I don't see, I don't see a big drawback. I don't think they need to be tested, I believe Ms. Chong had explained, heart doesn't change much in the course of years.
A congenital condition would only, it would be caught, it shouldn't be caught the first time.
Yeah, okay, and that makes sense. So as long as they're tested once in their career, and the kids that come in late, we have a system developed that catches those, so there's no extra cost to anybody's families only when they come back negative or there's a problem. And I think I'd rather have that and the test be wrong than not have it and have an incident. So I, I just don't see a problem with this. I mean, there's, there's some work that has to be done as far as getting the details, but, you know, I, parents, and they're just good parents, I mean, it would have been easy for me to say, no, we gotta go, I've got a meeting, or I've gotta go here, I gotta do that, instead of saying, no, let's take it. You know what's gonna hurt? It's not gonna hurt anything but a little time, a little time, and it's gonna be well worth it to a lot of parents. So that, that's just my comment. So that, that's just my comments.
You did mention about, we have to, we have to learn more about the details. And I think that is something that is concerning, that we're looking to adopt the policy potentially without all these details. And so the, the, the potential ramifications that have been presented so far, we don't necessarily have all the answers to those this evening. But we, we, this is the policy and then after this, it would be left up for procedure within the staff and the superintendent.
Can I, can I ask if Tommy can speak to that? We received an email, correct me if I'm wrong, from our current athletic director?
Yes, Mr. Drabzick from FPC.
At FPC. And I was really delighted to read his note that he was with, again, my, the details, it was at Orange County?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I'm surprising myself. He was with Orange County when they adopted this or a similar policy. This is really loud, my apologies. That's one of the things that gives me great comfort to know that we have somebody in the mix who has been through this and can help with those POEs, those prevention of errors or the things that maybe, you know, we put in place at the beginning, we're not having to kind of deal with later. So I don't know, Tommy, if you can speak anymore to what I've just said about the, the value that he would bring to this?
Yes, Mr. Drabzick from Flagler Palm Coast High School is the current athletic director. He did, he does, he comes from, he's a, he's a graduate of FPC, was with Father Lopez, went to Orange County, all serving as athletic directors. He was a vital role with Orange County Public Schools, worked with their county athletic director, creating procedures and athletic clearance form, another form that athletic directors at each school site would be responsible for, for maintaining that document. We use electronic athletic clearinghouse and we would be working with creating this, this PDF form when presented to our athletic directors, make it electronic. So Mr. Drabzick at FPC is a valuable resource for district staff on creating procedures around the operations of, of this if it's approved tonight.
Yeah, so just to state again, I've said it before, I do support ECG screenings. I do sports physicals at work. There's been times I've offered and said to a parent, I'd like to do an EKG and they're like, yes, please. But again, it's, it's just giving them that choice. In healthcare, we don't force anything on anyone. We want the patient to make that decision. So just for me, I at the very least would like a parent opt out, but I do hope that they'll take advantage like so many already have.
Chair Ferry, I've got, if I may, a few thoughts. So I, just kind of continuing on with the, the previous part that Tommy and I were discussing, again, I don't know who said it, but we just, we're really blessed to have this great partnership with Advent Health here in Flagler County. And I like to say if a, you know, if a door opens for you, go through it. You know, that's something that I, I would love to see us take advantage of and, and I really do feel confident that Advent Health will continue to be a great partner. So I think we mentioned in a workshop, like, well, what happens if I don't have the money to help my kid, you know, with this diagnosis? And I feel really confident that Advent Health will continue to be that great partner in making sure we save kids' lives and, and help parents out, getting that figured out. I want to just, if you guys will allow me, I've just got a few thoughts to share. I don't see this the same as mandates for public education. I, I see extracurriculars as, as just that. That's not math and reading. That's activities that students don't have to participate in as part of public education. So I really do make that distinction. Students can go to the classroom, they can fully participate as Flagler County students and not get this screening. I do believe that this is, this is something that would be separate for, for activities. I think Dr. Conklin already said this or possibly Cheryl Massaro. This is not, I'm going to use the M-word. This is not masks. This is not every day. This is a one-time minutes, completely unintrusive procedure that does in fact save lives and something that I've observed. It's kind of like when you're about to buy a car and now all of a sudden you see that same model all over the place. Kind of now with this discussion.
I feel like I'm hearing it all.
Man, I'm seeing it all over the place. And it's not just student athletes within high school. You're seeing a 22-year-old, a 24-year-old, these young adults who are just starting their lives, who are, who are dropping dead in their, in their activities because they did not have this available to them. Okay, and the other thing, again, this was brought up, I appreciate you adding this to the motion. I didn't even think about band, like a marching band or a J, J ROTC or, you know, any, any more strenuous activities. The other thing I wanted to call out with that, we do live in the state of Florida and I'm not a medical person, but I know that when I am super hot and super humid, that really does exasperate anything that I have going on. So I think especially being in the state of Florida, when I think about our band kids and, you know, their full uniforms out in this heat or any of our activities, our cheerleaders, which I also, then that brings me, I think, into my last point, guys, I appreciate your time. Something that I mentioned in a previous workshop, one of the reasons I think we do health physicals every year, it's not just for that student, that student athlete, but for the whole, right? The, the whole team. It's that everybody gets on that field and that pool, whatever it is, they get in there kind of expecting everybody around there. Everybody around them is healthy. And so, not to be silly, but if I'm a cheerleader and a strong male cheerleader throws me up in the air, I expect he's going to catch me when I come back down. I think someone, Cheryl, maybe it was you, brought up the weight spotters. If I'm weightlifting and you're spotting me, I trust you're going to be there. So it's also, you know, we talk about parental rights, I also think of that, that it's not just about my kid. It's about all of the kids and everybody collectively feeling confident when they're on the field or the pool or wherever, that all of their teammates are safe and are going to get through that game together or that activity together. So I originally, I will say, I very much believe typically in parent opt-out, very much so. I, I just don't think this is a time for that. I really see this as a time for it being mandatory and that, I will tell you, at this time, that is where my, my vote is.
Sorry, just a couple of thoughts and I promise I'll try not to be repetitive, but I, I do think having them do the, the ECG prior to, only once, right, in, in their athletic career, but prior to, as it's written in the policy that's in the agenda item, prior to engaging in anything. I think the only thing that would need to be added is band and J ROTC.
What about cheerleaders?
I think cheerleaders would be covered under sports.
That's correct. Our cheerleaders through the FHSA, there's competitive cheer, that is a sanctioned sport. So our sideline cheer also receives physicals.
But I think, you know, similar, Ms. Hunt, to what you were saying, since we started having this conversation, I feel like I see cases of this in the news on the regular. And it's tragic and reading some of the emails and thank you, all of you for coming in and sharing your story because there's nothing, there's nothing that any of us can compare it to other than hearing what you've gone through. And the idea, you know, talking about all students, you think about the trauma, right? Even if it's, even if a student is not directly responsible for holding up or helping another student, but the trauma of seeing your classmate collapse on a, a field or a court is, I mean, traumatic for everybody, students, teachers, faculty, everybody. But the idea that it is covered, and if there comes a point in time where something happens with the Advent agreement, I would have to believe that there are additional partners that would step up to the plate. And if not, right now, parents have to do a physical screening anyway. So it would be part of that with their own medical provider. I just think that once again, Flagler has an opportunity to be Flagler forward and lead the way and adopt a policy that will mandate this screening, that literally, the one common thread in most of the emails that we got was the parent admitting, gosh, I was in a rush, I had 50 million things going on and really honestly, it was just one line at the bottom of a document, it couldn't have been that big of a deal, I just didn't do it. That's life, right? Life just gets busy or just, there's stuff you gotta do and there's a 50 million things going on at the same time. It's so easy to let it go when it's something that could literally save a child's life. So I, I, I hope that we can, Flagler can lead the way with a policy like this.
Chair Ferry, just real quick, may I ask, and I don't want to put them on the spot, but I just wanted to ask if it, if our new student members would like to say anything if the rest, if the other board members would, would like to also make that request?
Sure.
Thank you.
Red, is it red? Is it red?
Yep, it's on. There we go. Okay, thank you. I myself am an athlete. I do varsity swim, I think Johani, you do varsity swim as well. So, I mean, I will definitely say that the process of getting your physical, because I also, I did miss the free physical day. It, it is lengthy and it's definitely like, it's busy. Like both my parents, they do work, so it was definitely hard and difficult to find that time to go get the physical done. So I can definitely, I don't think I got an ECG screening and I can imagine that my mom must have, she was too busy, didn't think that it was that important. But I do think that safety does come first. When I did my physical, I actually submitted it wrong. I remember showing up to swim practice and they told me I couldn't get into the water yet and I remember being frustrated going home. But, you know, looking back, especially hearing the stories, I think that at the end of the day, like no sport, no activity you could do is more important than your life. And I think that making it mandatory might be frustrating for some parents, but I do think that having that 10 minutes of your time to get that screening is definitely way more important than losing your child.
Yeah, for sure.
Thank you, Dani. So I also am a student athlete. I am on varsity swim and also a lifeguard, so I do understand the importance of children's lives and my heart goes out to those families with your students and I'm very sorry to hear that. That being said, however, I am seeing a statistic here that says approximately it only detects, it says these screenings have shown to detect cardiac abnormalities in approximately 3% of student athletes. So what happens to those other 97%? I mean, that's what I'm reading here in the background. And then, again, I do, I would like to say with Mr. Ferry, how we don't necessarily have 100% of the details and one of my biggest things is also what if it is read wrong? I do, I know that we're offering those free screenings and I think that's super, super great. And I know that a lot of students miss out on those opportunities, so maybe there could be a possibility that we could offer more dates, that students would be able to go and get those medical paperwork's done and filled out. And so I'm not saying, I don't think it should be mandatory, however, I do think it's important to inform those families and those parents of, you know, what your students can be dealing with and what you're handling because it is a life that you're risking, however, it's also in the hands of those doctors and the people who are also part of the cardiac arrest. So I think it's very important to have it, not have it mandatory, but have it as be a decision and inform those parents and families.
Thank you both for sharing your views.
Can, can Johani just really quickly state the, you just, it looks like you just kind of searched. Can you tell us where you got that information and maybe the full?
In the agenda item details, it says here, these screenings prevent, no, these screenings have shown to detect cardiac abnormalities in approximately 3% of student athletes. So then my question.
Oh, the national population.
Yeah, absolutely. That, that is a typo, so I do apologize on that.
Yeah.
So I, I will fix that error.
Okay.
What, what is it? Do you know accurately?
I think it might be 3% of student athletes have.
Yeah, that's what they're saying, is that 3% of them.
Is it 3% of those screened have, actually show a heart abnormality? Okay.
And we're probably right around there.
Yeah, and we are looking, I mean, this is not something, I, I can't, no, Dr. Kennedy back in the back gave one of the, you know, statistics of one in, you know, whatever, 100. So we're not saying that this is going to identify a heart defect in 90% of our students. It's a small percentage of students that we are going to be detecting or they will be detecting it for, but it's about those small percent.
And the, the only, the only last comment and I guess question I have, Mr. Ferry, you had mentioned about the details and are you referring to the details if we lose the partnership with Advent? What kind of details are you kind of referring to? And then the last comment that I had was really in refer, reference to, and during the workshop, we discussed this, was the liability of the school district. And the, you know, we're responsible, I, I know everybody sitting at the dais cares about kids. And I have to say, I'm sorry for some of the things that have been thrown at some of you at the dais because I think those comments have been very unfair. I know that you care deeply about students. When we look at liability, we're responsible not just for the health and wellbeing of our students, but the health, the financial health and wellness of our district as well. And I know we all believe in local control. It just recently had a conversation with a member of the State Board of Ed and their frustration was, why does it have to get to the point where the state board or the state legislature has to mandate local districts to do whatever it might be? Class size was one of the topics we were talking about. So we have the opportunity as school board members to make a local decision here. And I would just, again, I think just hearing from the public, the idea, whatever the percent might be, but the idea that you could save one child from screen, just a simple test is worth all of it. And if it causes some aggravation, you know, you might be that aggravated parent and then find out your child was discovered with a, a heart abnormality. So.
I'll throw out a detail.
Go ahead.
And I know we already said that these ECGs will go to a medical doctor, but in that moment, yeah, we do need to talk about what kind of certifications do we want the screeners to have? Are, you know, is it basic life support? Is that, you know, you really need ACLS. So just making sure something doesn't get missed, just because a computer says something, it doesn't mean it's correct. You really need to be able to read the rhythm just to know what you're looking at.
I just want to address Dr. Conklin's questions. The details I was referring to are some of them that were mentioned tonight and, and that was a response to Ms. Massaro's comment, that we need, we, we don't have all these details on how this is going to lay out. So, but irregardless, these are personal questions that each board member has, right? And so because there aren't the details or the answers tonight that some of the board members have, that's what I was referring to. And we're, we're going to make the policy and if we vote this in tonight, those details will come out after we vote this policy in. But what I want to, what I want to add to this here is, number one, as it's been stated, I 100% am not against ECG, you know, testing. I have, both my children have done it and I encourage other parents to do it as well. And I think it is wonderful through our partnership that we are able at this time to offer this at no cost to our students, okay? But we, we, we can't base a policy on the, what is, what is, what can change in the future such as whether this stays a no-cost option for our students. Now, I, I believe that Advent Health has every intention of, of continuing this program, but in, in, in reality, if, if something changes on their side, mind you, they are a private entity outside partnering with us. If something changes on their side, to be able to offer this at, at no cost, If something changes on their side, to be able to offer this at no cost, that will create another barrier for our student athletes to get this monitoring. But the one thing, when you talked about local control, and can we, should we be doing this here, even though we are in compliance with the state by requiring the physicals, which we do, right? And we go a step further through our partnership by making the ECGs available to all students on the days that they're available. And, you know, somebody had asked, and I, well, I guess it really boils down to, what do you think, what does one board member feel our role is? I feel our role in this community is an educational institution. And this is an area where we're mandating what a parent should, what a parent should do rather than what they've decided to do for their child. Plain and simple, right? We're making that choice for them. Whatever the basis, we're making that choice for them here. And so somebody would say, well, why wouldn't a parent want this for their child? Sounds like a great thing, and I believe it is, right? But the answer is, when we're making policy, we should be solving a problem. And when somebody asks, why wouldn't a parent want this? I would say that, I think you're right. I think most parents do, and it has proven through the numbers that over 80% participation shows that most parents want this for their child, and they're voluntarily participating in these screenings. So when we have something, a policy and a procedure that's working, why are we adding a policy over this to replace it when it is working? Because we've got to remember also, that this, we're not the only source of screening children in this community. Many of these children, not all, but have primary care, doctors that they go see, right? And so they're getting medical attention there. And I believe the number was, was it 1 in 300 students may have this ailment that is detected by ECG? When you, statistically, if that is, in that number, and the fact that we have 83% participation in these screenings, I think we have mitigated the risk significantly.
Well, what about the 17%?
They, it is available to them.
What about, but what about the 17% that maybe we're too busy, they couldn't do it, they didn't have time, and they passed on it? I just would push back a little bit on what you are saying in regards to, we're an educational entity, yes, but we're an educational entity, like Ms. Hunt had referenced, that also offers a lot of extracurricular activities. If parents don't want their child to get screened, then their child should not be allowed to participate in those activities. That is, I'm talking about, it's also a liability...
As Ms. Hunt does. I see that as part of their education.
Okay, then if it is...
So I have a different view.
Then you just made the point.
No, I did not, because my point is very clear, is that it's our role to educate the community, help provide those services, and let them decide if they're going to participate or not.
Well, our role, our legal role as a school board member is to ensure the safety of our students and to educate our students.
And we are in compliance with that, and I will, because it was brought up about legal liability, I do not feel, I feel that we're entering into possibly taking on more legal liability, especially if we're going to have our staff do these tests.
We're not talking about our staff doing these tests.
Well, we're talking about training our staff to...
Athletic trainers, athletic trainers.
Even still...
That doesn't make them qualified to read an ECG.
Even our athletic trainers...
They're not on our salary.
You are, having a policy, all of the research that you look at talks about the, having a policy mitigating the risk, doing your due diligence, having documentation and a paper trail. I mean, if you talk about the financial aspect of this liability and the physical aspect of the liability, there's no price you're going to put on the loss of a child.
I don't believe that your statement about opening us up to liability is accurate.
There is also a liability...
Because we're not doing the ECG. I'm going to ask, because we're not attorneys, I'm going to ask Attorney Delaney to weigh in on this, because if that is a factor in this decision, that we're opening ourselves up to additional liability by not adding it...
Do you think that if we lost a child on one of our athletic fields, whether their parents signed a waiver or not, do you think that that parent wouldn't sue the bejesus out of us? Of course they would.
Right. So, but the question is...
No, if there is a...
Can we hear from Attorney Delaney?
I'm going to just, let's just pause this question. I'm going to, I'm asking a question. There was, there was a concern brought forward by Dr. Conklin, that this is going to expose us to additional legal liability by making this not mandatory. So I'm going to ask Mr. Delaney to chime in on this here, from a legal perspective.
Sure. Couple of different issues, I think, that have been brought up. First, I think it's clear that it's not legally required that the ECGs be offered by the school district as part of this process. It's not currently a standard in Florida, given the backup material showing that I think only six out of the 67 counties in the state appear to require that.
So far.
So far. So, but it's not currently a legal requirement or a standard of care. To Dr. Conklin's point, if you do experience a tragedy, I don't think that that would be the one thing that a plaintiff or a family would hang their hat on, is that you failed to mandate that my child have an ECG, but they would probably find other theories of liability. And so to your point is, if you have the ECG, and it maybe prevents that tragedy from occurring, you might have one less lawsuit that gets filed in the first place. So I understand where you're coming from there. But there is, our failure to mandate it and requirement, I don't think opens up the district to additional liability for that purpose.
I just want everybody to realize that this is not foolproof. We're talking about screening hundreds of kids, which is great, as I've already said, but you could have somebody just sign off and be like, yep, this one's good, this one's good, and something could be missed. It's not going to be 100% perfect. It's just, you know, that's a reality.
And that was the third point that I was going to get to. You know, I'm, it's not entirely clear from the discussion who exactly are going to be the screeners or the people responsible for reading those and dealing with the false negatives and what the contractual agreements are, whether any of those people would be our actual employees, our agents by contract, and how that responsibility is divided up in any contracts that we have entered.
Chair Furry, can we also hear from Superintendent Moore? Because a lot of what is being talked about is operations. Now, part of my decision is based on my trust in her, her leadership, her aptitude. I trust that if we were to pass this policy tonight, that she will ensure that it is done correctly, because of everybody up here, I think she cares about kids the most. And so I, Superintendent Moore, I would just love to hear from you, should we pass this tonight? Do you feel confident that you would be able to put together all of the pieces to ensure the district is safe, our students are safe, and our parents are most on board with this that we can hope for?
A couple of things that I want to address that have come up. One, you know, taking us, because we have spent a lot of time really talking about this and workshopping this over, over the last year, is also remembering, and if we need to make sure that it's very spelled out in the language doing that, is that this board, when this conversation initially came up, said that when and if this is adopted to have a policy that will require, with or without an opt-out, that this board would spend that first year in an opportunity to educate families about it, not making it required in that moment, right? So when we think about the rest of this year, it will be spent helping to educate families about the change that we will be going into. And then beginning in the '25 school year, this would be required for our student athletes and any other extracurricular activity that this board adds on. So I just want to clarify that, too, because, because we know this is a heavy lift, we would take the rest of this year really working on getting the procedures in place for it, because there are a lot of things. You hear from Mr. Dreszky, who asked specifically to share this with the board, but there is a lot of information that has been collected and a lot of things that we know we're going to have to do in order to stand this up. But I think at the end of the day, the question that we are, that is faced here with this board is, regardless of if there is a partnership to have this offered for free, because not everybody takes advantage of the free partnership, and we appreciate our partner with Advent, they have sat before you and said that they are committed to it. But the question is, regardless of if it is free or not, do you, as a board, want to require students to have this screener before they play a sport? And that is really what we are, we're dealing with. Because, yes, Advent has declared they, they will continue to partner with us, and I'm sure that they will. I don't have a reason to think that they will not, but if they aren't, do you still want to require this to be a part of what is necessary for our athletes and our other students that are participating in extracurricular activities to participate? And that's the question, and I think that's what we're, that what you are faced with today and what we have to really get to the root of.
Right. And I would add, on that other 17%, I think it is for us to continue to educate in a partnership with Advent to those, that 17% of parents, to say, here are the merits and the benefits of having the screening for your child, right? Beforehand, at the day of these screenings, that is what, how we would address that 17%. And we, and we don't even know that maybe those parents chose, in that 17%, chose not to do the ECG, because maybe they had it done from their doctor, that they, that they'd said, you know, we've already done that. It's like if you had, if you've had a shot, you're not going to take another one.
You'd have to provide evidence of. The bottom line is, Will, we're just going to respectfully disagree completely on this. The idea, I still just feel very strongly that it should be mandated, and a part of the natural, not natural, a part of the health screening that takes place. And I'll tell you what, if we don't adopt this policy this year, I promise you, probably within the next year or two, the Florida High School Athletic Association's going to mandate it. But why wait? There's no reason to wait. Take advantage of having some local control to make that decision. We're just respectfully going to disagree with each other, Will.
I have faith in parents that they can make the right decision for their children.
It does not mean that I don't have faith in parents, so I reject that statement.
I don't believe it's our role to co-parent with...
I am not looking to co-parent anybody. This is not a vaccine, this is not a mask, it's not invasive.
Mandates, when it comes to these things, this is sets a slippery slope.
Come on, there is no slippery slope.
A future mandate that will come down the line.
Well, we're going to respectfully disagree. We want to continue to debate it, I'm happy to do that.
I'd like to call the question.
Well, can I?
I'd like to call the question.
Okay. And I would like to clarify a couple of points.
I'll allow you to finish, Ms. Hunt.
I don't think they'll vote on calling the question. If you guys, listen, if you guys, if everybody else would like to...
Go ahead, go please.
Just a couple of quick things that I wanted to clear up. Chair Furry, you and I are both cruisers, and I just, as you continue to talk about kind of us forcing our will on parents, I just want you to know, I see this very differently. I see this as when we go to the swimming area on the cruise ship, and they say, you know, you have to be in this type of physical health to be on the flow rider, or you have to be this tall to ride this ride, or you, you know. I see it as not forcing onto parents. I see this, I see this as the entity...
Yes, that's how I see it.
Flagler County, Flagler School Board, saying, to ride this ride, you need to be this tall.
Well, that's a waiver, and there's no waiver option in this motion that we have right now.
Not a waiver, it's mandatory.
I guess I just, I guess, but I, maybe I'm not making the point, but I guess I just, I see it a little bit.
Well, I'm just saying, that in this, that there is no opt-out in the motion, in this option right now, there is no option for a parent to even opt out.
No, there's not, because if they're going to play on our athletic fields, they should be in good health to do that. Period, end of story.
Well, just because they didn't take the ECG does not mean they are, they are not in good health.
Will, you can catch...
Point of clarification?
Yes, please.
We have, we have had a member call for the vote. It wasn't clear to me whether, by show of hands or indication, whether we have four board members ready to go along with that. You need 2/3s. Since we have five board members, we need four out of five who are saying they're ready to vote right now to address that question.
That's fine, I'm ready to vote if everybody says.
Okay. So we will move forward with the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay? Say nay. Okay, so it's a three against two, the motion passes.
Thank God.
Okay, so we will move on here to our next action item, 19.01, School Board Attorney Process. Ms. Moore, you have...
Yes, so at our last workshop, the board discussed, having Chair Furry began conversations with Mr. Delaney about a continued partnership and, with his company, and so we cannot move forward on that until there is board action here, and so that is what this is for.
Okay, so I need a motion to appoint me as the negotiator with the attorney.
So moved.
So I have a motion by Ms. Massaro and a second by Dr. Conklin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay. So we will move on to 19.02. We have Legislative Platform, and we have Mr. Bob Serra online with us. Welcome, Mr. Serra.
Good evening, Bob.
Sorry, Bob, we're so late.
Good evening. We have spent the last five weeks developing this platform together, and we workshopped it a couple of weeks ago together. And so I would recommend this to you, and it has the superintendent's recommendation as well.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, I'm sorry, who made the motion? I didn't hear. Oh, Dr. Conklin? Dr. Conklin made the motion, and I have a second from Ms. Massaro. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. All right, thank you, Mr. Serra. And then we also have 19.03. This is for Niola to take over our policy. Motion for...
Second.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the...
Conklin.
Okay, Dr. Conklin, have a motion and a second from Ms. Massaro. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. And now we will move on to public comment. Do we have anybody signed up for public comment?
Just one, Ms. Mon Dragon. I believe she's about to discuss helping kids not to forget 9/11.
Welcome.
Good evening, board members. My name is Valentina Mon Dragon, and I am a 7th grader at Indian Trails. You may remember me from the last time I spoke here. As you know, last week was 9/11. This day is a very tragic part of our country's history. On this day at my school, we had our reading fest, which is our state testing. For me, that day is so significant. For some students, it's just a normal day, but not for me. On September 11, 2001, my mom was working in Manhattan. She experienced firsthand the devastation of the terrorist attacks. My mom and I take the time to commemorate that day and attend the 9/11 memorial each year. The day after 9/11, my homeroom teacher covered what happened, and we watched the video. Days after, I hear students complaining, "Why do we have to do so much work for 9/11? It's not even important. People died. So what?" Today, I came here to ask you if you could do more. Have a moment of silence in schools across the county on 9/11. It doesn't have the same effect the day after than the day of. Also, please consider not having state testing on 9/11. Also, please consider not having state testing on 9/11. This impacted my performance and potentially ha, may have impacted other students as well. Please help students never forget the importance of 9/11. Thank you for your time and good night.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And definitely, we never want to forget, and thank you for some great suggestions.
That concludes public comment here.
Okay, so we will close public comment and move on to board member requests. Do we have any board member requests this evening? Okay, then we will move on to closing comments, and we'll start with our new student school board members.
Okay. Good evening, fellow board members of the 2024 and 2025 school year. Firstly, I would like to thank you all for allowing me the privilege to sit with you and represent Matanzas High School. In recent news, many of our Pirates participated during homecoming week and dressed up every day last week, counting down the days until homecoming. I want to say a special thank you to Superintendent Ms. Moore for showing up and supporting our Pirates during our pep rally. Matanzas had a successful turnout throughout both our homecoming football game last Friday, following our actual dance on Saturday, September 14th, held from 7:00 to 11:00 p.m., in which our selected theme for this year was Summer Lovin', inspired by Teen Beach movie. We congratulated those seniors who earned their ace diplomas and gathered alongside our courtyard to be pictured for their accomplishments. Our juniors this year were privileged to attend a UNF college tour and were offered so many new opportunities for their futures. The first ever pickleball club created in a Flagler County school held their first meeting, and we are introducing a multitude of new clubs this year, such as Newspaper Club, Fishing Club, and our ladies African American mentoring is back this year. Our after-school buses are up and running again, and every Tuesday and Thursday for the convenience of our students with needed transportation. Our technical programs received a grant for a student-led vending machine in which students may purchase necessities for school days or events, thanks to none other than Jeremy Ossler. We want to take this time to congratulate those J R O T C male mix Raiders team for coming in first place on the Raiders team run and second overall at this past weekend's Raiders competition at Union County. On Monday, September 16th, our Spanish teachers helped MHS celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month by dressing up using their respective culture's dresses and informing our students about their Hispanic heritage. We recently recognized those Pirates who earned a variety of awards from Senior of the Month to a var, to a variety of college board awards. Congratulations, Matanzas Pirates. High school junior Logan Picaro was recognized as the Inagro Beaver Toyota Student of the Week. And earlier today, our law students attended as young Tigers for the Tiger Bay Club hosted in Hammock Dunes and met with important community members of Flagler County. In upcoming news, our school is hosting our first play of the year, Up the Down Staircase, being played from Thursday, October 3rd to Saturday, October 5th. Information regarding tickets for purchase is still under discussion. Finally, I feel that it is honorable to mention that our high school also reached an academic achievement this year of upholding the title of being an A school, which has not happened since 2015. New safety protocols have been enforced this year in which students ring doorbells to enter buildings. Security guards are there to open doors for students and ensure that they are closed properly for the safety of everyone. This concludes my closing comments for tonight on behalf of Matanzas High School. Thank you, and have a great rest of your night.
Thank you, Johani. As for FPC, we also have a lot of announcements, as well as your ROTC unit. Our ROTC unit also placed with four first-place medals and a first place overall at a recent Raider competition, and they continue to place in many Raider competitions coming up. They also performed the color guard tonight, and also the color guard at the 9/11 Memorial Tribute Climb for Flagler County. Our FPC cheerleaders, we have two varsity cheerleaders that were actually selected to go to Honolulu, Hawaii to commemorate for our Pearl Harbor Memorial Parade. That's Gabriella Dudley and Ally Brown. Our FPC weightlifting coach, Coach Hatchon, was honored in the Florida Athletic Coaches' Association Hall of Fame. And our varsity football captain, Colby Kronk, officially set the new FPC sack record in a 48-0 game with five sacks for a total of 35.5, a record that was previously set by the assistant coach, Coach London, with a 32.5. On cross-country, our girls cross-country team won their first-ever Spikes and Spurs championship, which was made possible by freshman Peyton Sarassi, who won her race with over 25 seconds between her and second place. As for our homecoming, we are currently doing our Spirit Week, so our students are dressing up with their tacky tourist, stand comfy road trip, our theme this year is road trip, and also commemorating 50 years of FPC. So our homecoming will be this Saturday, which everyone's looking forward to with a bunch of other SGA events that they keep up with. So thank you, and thank you for allowing me to sit on this board as well.
My comments are brief. Welcome. You, having the presence of students on our board is the greatest opportunity our board can have. Hearing from you is super important, so please, I encourage you, share your opinion. Let us hear that voice, and as you represent your students in your schools. So thank you. Look forward to, well, I'll be working with you for a short period of time, but congratulations.
Thank you.
Just, my heart goes out to FPC and our school partners who have been impacted by the loss of our students, and of course, the family and friends of both FPC students that have been lost. I want to take a moment to just acknowledge the student support team for providing the services and kind of being on the ground and all hands on deck kind of approach to helping students. And again, I would encourage parents that if they feel like their student is really struggling, to please reach out to the counselors. That is what they're there for, and there's plenty of help available for students. I want to thank you, Superintendent Moore, for your, your leadership, but your team's involvement and the school's involvement in the 9/11 climb. I didn't get to participate or, or attend, but I certainly got to see all of the pictures and the smiling faces. And I think having the schools participate in the way they did, really, from everything I heard, brought a really beautiful energy to that somber event. So thank you for that. And I much appreciate your comments. Very well spoken, young lady. And sometimes, when we get far away from an event, I think sometimes we, we can miscalculate what things take place on those days. So thank you for reminding all of us about the sensitivity of that day and the need to not schedule certain things on that day. So that was really great of you to do, so thank you. Other than that, just keeping our school family and, and our thoughts and prayers. And I, I know we might have all had somewhat of a different of opinion about how to get there, but I'm excited that Flagler will be one of the few school districts that offer a policy that will mandate that kind of screening. So that's all I have.
The first thing I want to do is welcome and congratulate our two students, because we'll get to work closely together the entire year, even when I'm not here, for the virtual teen town halls. We've got a meeting coming up Monday to discuss what those topics will be and the dates will be, and I'm looking forward to it. I, I warn you, your predecessors did an excellent job, so the challenge is now on, okay, for both of you. So we're gonna have a lot of fun, and it's gonna be good. It's gonna be good. So welcome, glad to have you here. Okay. I, I would like to also say about the EKG, I always say EKG, but ECG, same thing. We may not always be on the same page, but there's no doubt, everybody on this board cares about these children, and they support ECGs. The, the press that was released was ridiculous about three board members not being supportive, and, and that was, that was way wrong, way wrong, and shouldn't happen. And I just want to make sure we support that. I do think that this is a great opportunity for the procedures to be developed, for education to take place, because if, you know, if it saves one kid, and, and we know we have that happen, is well worth it. Is well worth it. So I think we'll see the benefits of this, but the procedures will get in place. And our athletic trainers, they'll probably end up getting ECJ machines, and they'll be doing the ECGs and sending it off for readings that those that miss it. So hopefully, if it becomes cost prohibitive, or there should be changes with Advent Health, policies change. Change your policy. Policies change, you change your policy if that happens to be the case. But I, I don't really see that coming down the pike. Something that I find interesting, you know, we, we are all supporters of parents' rights. I don't think anybody up here too is against parents' rights. But I am going to reinforce the fact that with parents' rights comes parents' responsibilities. Parents have to be responsible for their children. Now, I'm sitting here talking probably to the people I don't need to be talking to. But, you know, we have had a number of threats at schools. Volusia County this year's had 384 threats at schools.
Oh, my goodness.
384 threats, gang. We had a parent, we've had a parent who actually had their child and took them and the threat that they made as a joke. It's always a joke, but they found it, they took the child, and they reported it. The parent, that's parents' rights. We have to have our parents step up and be responsible for their children. Know where they are, know what they're saying, know what they're doing, because it's out of hand, and it's not just here. It's all over. So we've got to do something about this. Again, with parental rights comes parental responsibilities. Step up and take them. Know about your kids and stay on them. It's important, really important. And also, I will take the, I, the parents and the families and the staff at FPC, my heart's just breaking for you. It's been a tough two weeks. You know, we never want to lose students, ever, for any reason, and this has just been tragic, just been tragic. So my heart is with all of them. What else? I think that's it at this point. I'm looking forward to the ECG procedures to be developed, and I do use Mr. Drisback at FPC. I think he can offer a lot of help. And that's all I have, and have a good night.
Good evening. I'm gonna just be echoing, I think, a lot of what's been said. I will, I will share, all of us receive, as board members, receive text messages. Superintendent Moore and her team are really great about keeping us informed, and I'm gonna speak for myself, but I think I'm gonna share how these other board members feel. When we get these notifications, our hearts just break completely, and for hours and days. And so I, I want to also share my deepest condolences. Anytime we have a loss of a student, or a student loses a parent, it's just, it's always really hard for our, for our community, and just again, our deepest condolences, my deepest condolences to our new student members. Forgive me, is it Danny? Awesome. I had written down Johani, but then I was out of it. But listen, I'm so glad your principal shared your background, so impressive. And man, between Roy Mara and, I mean, off to like great schools and doing great things. And so I just, I know great things are ahead for the two of you, and thank you for sharing tonight. I'm sorry if I put you on the spot, but I really would love for the student members to continue to be an active part of this board. And then the only other thing that I wanted to share this evening, so I hope I said welcome, that was a lot, but I really just wanted to say welcome. The only other thing that I wanted to share, in the spirit of our bully proclamation, I just wanted to say the words, I think it was, they were brought up tonight, but choose kindness, whether we're talking about students who are struggling, whether we're talking about the fact that life can really be short. That's something else that's come up tonight. Choose kindness. I think that's just, those are two words that really can, can guide all of us. And with that, I wish everybody happiness and health. Thank you.
Just gonna say welcome also to our students. You both did a great job tonight contributing, and just hope to see more of that. So thank you for being here. Also, just offer my condolences to FPC and the families that have lost children. It just, it hurts the heart of every parent, you know? Nobody ever wants to have to go through that, and so I'm just, I offer my prayers to those families. I'd also just want to commend our Flagler County sheriffs. I, I know it's been a very busy week of Volusia and Flagler, and I just thank you guys for being firm, protecting our students, our families. These threats have got to stop. You better believe that I showed every single one of my boys what went on this week, right down to my six-year-old, because they need to know. This is what's going to happen if you threaten another child. And that's just where I stand on that, and I never want to have to have that conversation any further. Also, just thank you, Cheryl, for pointing out, you know, some of the inaccuracies out there. This one, this vote was difficult, you know, because of what I do. I, it, it was very close to my heart. I let a lot of things roll off my back, but I don't like to see us being accused of things that are not true. Sally was accused of things that she didn't even weigh in on, you know? It's, it's not appropriate. So yeah, make sure you listen to the board meetings, hear our hearts, and where we stand on things. So yeah, we'll see how this goes in getting our kids screened. Thank you.
Yes, I echo many of the comments of my colleagues up here on the board. I want to start off by thanking all those that came tonight for public comment, and I know that's a very difficult thing to do, especially on a subject like that. So I, I commend their bravery, coming forward, speaking their mind, and letting us hear their voice and their concerns. Also, I want to thank our young speaker tonight also for reminding us about 9/11. And it is a day we can never forget, and we have to keep reminding each generation that these things can happen, and freedom isn't free, you gotta keep fighting for it. And knowing your, your history is an important part of preserving that. And so I commend you for not only coming forward and sharing that, but offering some great suggestions and solutions as well. So well done. And so, and, and also, I want to welcome our new school, student school board members, Ms. Strong and Ms. Neves. And I want to really commend you, you, I, I wouldn't say you were put on the spot. You were appointed tonight to, to be here, but you rose to the occasion immediately. You weren't bashful, and you, you spoke your mind, and that's what's needed of a school board member, because if we don't speak out where we stand, then, then, then the others can't know. And there, there are times when one board member may have a, a certain position, but shares another perspective, and that could be enlightening to another board member. So this, there's a reason why this structure exists, to have five elected board members here, and you are part of that with your conversation and your voice from, from our school. So thank you for your participation this evening. And I just want to also touch on these, these threats. Parents, it is just imperative that we get through to our children that, these decisions can be life-altering. I mean, we're talking about felonies that your young children, as, as teenager and younger, are, are receiving felonies. This is awful. And it is clear that law enforcement has said they have a zero tolerance, zero tolerance. There is no joke. It may be a joke to you, but it's not a joke to us, and it's not a joke to our law enforcement. And your parents cannot, to the kids out there, your parents can't protect you from this. If you make these threats, the sheriff is gonna knock on your door and put cuffs on you, and you're gonna have to answer for your actions. So just don't do it. And in closing, my heartfelt sympathy and condolences do go out to our families and those who love them. It's been, it's been shared across the dais tonight and throughout our school. I know we're hurting, but I just pray for healing during this, this grieving time. And as it has been mentioned here, this board, I will tell you, everybody's heart here is for our students on, on, on everything we do. We love our students, we want the best for them, and we're always up here doing what we feel is best from our elected seat. So I, and I do respect, although sometimes our, our opinions differ, I respect the honesty that each one of my colleagues here has, brings their best forward, and then it comes to a vote. And the vote is what holds. And that's what the electorate, the way they want it. And that's what the electorate, the way they want it. So, again, uh, thank you all for your efforts this evening and thank you staff for all that you've done to help get us to this evening. Superintendent Moore.
Happy twenty-seventh day of school. I know there were some people in the back, they're probably like counting, saying, is she gonna ask one of us what day it is? Right, happy twenty-seventh day of school. Um, I want to also welcome our two new student board members. I'm so excited to get an opportunity to, to learn and grow from you and to interact with you very closely here, um, as we meet. I had an opportunity to spend an hour with them before our board meeting and I know that they are going to do great things this year. And so I'm so excited to watch you, um, from this, this place. And so congratulations to you, do not take it lightly, you know, it was a competitive process and you were selected. And so serve well, serve your, your student body well. And as we discussed before, um, just remembering that you are representing your school and, um, you get an opportunity to be a voice for your fellow students there at the school and making sure that you just take, um, a lot of pride in, in doing that. You're not here just as, as yourself, but you represent, um, more than yourself, more than just your family. But you represent now over two thousand students at each of your, your schools. And so, um, super excited about the, the time that you'll have here. And to our student speaker tonight, um, thank you so much for speaking. Again, I hope I get an opportunity to meet you tonight, if not, I'll be calling your family. I will tell you already, uh, we have already made, um, a change to our testing schedule, um, that we definitely will not have any assessments on nine eleven. That was something that, um, w, we should've planned better for that. And so I do apologize to, to you for that and I assure you that we will make corrective action, um, for that and we'll follow up, um, with you on, on the rest of your comments. Um, tonight, I would say that this week, the last couple weeks, um, we've experienced a lot of different emotions. And, um, I want to say to this board, because I know that we only have, uh, two more months, one more meeting together as, as a, as a board, um, you as this board. Um, I just want to say thank you for giving me the opportunity to lead this district. Um, I, I am, I am honored to lead this organization. I've worked here and I believe in the work that we're doing and I see the great things that we are accomplishing. Um, but I will tell you, this week is filled with lots of different emotions, because, um, you know, when you're responsible for thirteen thousand five hundred-plus students, um, you, you feel sadness when, um, they pass at a young age. You feel excitement when we're celebrating. You are frustrated and hurt when they make choices that do not, um, align with what our guiding principles are. And so I want to say thank you, um, to you for giving me this opportunity to, to serve in this capacity. I do not take it lightly as well. And so I just wanted to take this opportunity to say that and I hope you guys have a great night.
Thank you, Superintendent Moore. And, uh, we will now adjourn this meeting.